Good evening. Welcome to the April 5th, 2021, meeting of the Stillwater City Council. And we've got a very special meeting tonight with a couple of different proclamations and some recognition to hand out, so I'm really excited that you all have joined us tonight. First up, to help us with the opening of our meeting and to help us with the Pledge of Allegiance, we have Savannah Steele. Savannah is a third grader at Highland Park, and Savannah actually wrote me a really nice handwritten letter a couple of weeks ago, just saying hello and saying she wished that she had a chance to meet us, so she got to come out to the meeting tonight and is going to help us open the meeting by helping us say the Pledge of Allegiance. So if everyone could please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, and with liberty and justice for all.
Here we go. All right, next up, we have another special presentation, and with us here tonight are two very special guests, OSU President Burns Hargis and First Cowgirl Ann Hargis. I'm going to actually come down to the front and say a few words and make a little presentation.
So I have a 20-minute speech prepared for you, Burns, but I felt like this may not be the best time. We have a resolution that lays out all of the wonderful accomplishments, your 13 years here, both you and Ann at Oklahoma State, and part of the Stillwater community, and your leadership over the university as part of the Stillwater community has been so transformative and so beneficial to all of us in the community, not just the university community, but all of Stillwater. And we wanted to take this opportunity to recognize that in a way that was meaningful. One of the most important projects we've worked on together here between the city and the university over the last several years has been Stillwater Municipal Airport and bringing commercial service to the airport. And so we felt that one of the best ways we could recognize not just that project, but all of your service, both you and First Burns and Ann for your service here in Stillwater, is to rename the airport access road from western all the way up to the airport to rename that Hargis Road. So we are very excited tonight to have that resolution on our agenda, and we wanted to make this presentation to both of you. Ann?
Hi.
Thank you so much. And then, I guess we'll give you the sign. How about the sign? I think we'll let you have this one. We'll get a different one to put up on the road. So thank you so much, both of you, for all of your service to the community of Stillwater over the last 13 years. Thank you. Yeah, absolutely. Thank you. We also have a framed copy of the movement itself. And now of the road. If you ever get lost, you'll know your way to Hargis.
We really appreciate. We have loved our time in Stillwater and working with the city of them. As I say, often we're willing to shift our shifters, oh, I should be shifting Stillwater and I'll work at that airport.
We will. We will. Thank you so much. Thank you. We will, I think, do another little ceremony at some point in the future, right out at the actual site when we put the sign on the road, so that's, I think, a good fitting tribute to the time of President Hargis and First Cowgirl Ann and their time here in Stillwater. So, all right. What's next? Special, no, that's not it. Proclamations. We have a proclamation in recognition of Lemonade Day. Emily? All right. Emily Alexander is here from the Chamber of Commerce. I'll read this, and then if you want to say a few words, or however you want to do it. Whereas Lemonade Day is good for kids, good for business, and good for Stillwater. The Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, Startup Stillwater, Simmons Bank, and Stillwater Medical Center, along with many other companies and organizations, are joining forces to bring this entrepreneurial program to Stillwater. And whereas Lemonade Day provides youth with free materials and support, thanks to our local sponsors, the young entrepreneurs who participate in the program earn money and are taught to spend a little, save a little, and share a little, donating a portion of their profits to any local charity of their choice. And whereas Lemonade Day is a day of learning and celebrating Stillwater's future, on May 1st, 2021, every citizen has a job, either buying or helping children sell lemonade. The citizens of Stillwater are encouraged to simply purchase a cup of lemonade from one of the youth participating in the program to demonstrate how our community cares for their future. And whereas, the city of Stillwater salutes and commends the sponsors, organizers, and participants of this program, and extends best wishes for successful and rewarding observance. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the city of Stillwater, hereby proclaim May 1st, 2021, as Lemonade Day in Stillwater, Oklahoma.
I don't really know how to call the Burns and Ann. They're pretty alike, I do.
Like he said, my name is Emily Alexander, and I am a junior at Oklahoma State, but I'm the communications intern for the Stillwater Chamber of Commerce. And this is such an exciting event that we have in Stillwater, Lemonade Day. So just to tell you a little bit about it, like he mentioned, it is an entrepreneurial experience for our youth in Stillwater. We're desiring to not only open their eyes to what it looks like to run a business, but also to run a business and then to give back to the community. Last year, we had a participant, Emery Crawford. She gave back, I think it was around $100 of her profits in her lemonade stand to an organization, OU Medical, which helped her whenever she was a young child and she needed medical help. And so this is such an exciting thing and really inspires the community to give back, to help one another out, which is truly what the Stillwater and Oklahoma State University spirit is all about. So we're so excited. Thank you so much for this proclamation, and on May 1st, get out there and go buy some lemonade from those young entrepreneurs. Thank you.
Thank you, Emily.
Yeah, come back up. Thank you.
All right. Now, we also have a proclamation in recognition of Fair Housing Month. I'm not sure we have anybody specific. Are you, Paul? Are you going to? Okay. Whereas, April 1, 2021, marked the 53rd anniversary of the passage of the U.S. Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968 as amended, which enunciates a national policy on fair housing without regard to race, color, creed, religion, national origin, gender, familial status, sexual orientation, handicap, and encourages fair housing opportunities for all citizens. And whereas, the city of Stillwater is committed to support the Fair Housing Law, Title VIII of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, by continuing to address discrimination in our community, to support programs that will educate the public about the right to equal housing opportunities, and to help assure every citizen of their right to fair housing. Now therefore, I, William Joyce, Mayor of the city of Stillwater, do hereby declare April 2021 as Fair Housing Month in Stillwater, Oklahoma, and urge all citizens to support fair housing throughout the year. Okay. That ends the fun part of the meeting. Now we get to do business. We're down at item five on the agenda right now, the consent docket. We have minutes, an easement, and a request for the housing authorities waiver payment in lieu of taxes for fiscal year 2021 on the consent docket. Counselors, questions, comments, or motion?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. Item six is public comment on items not scheduled for public hearing. I don't have anyone sign up for that on this meeting, correct? Okay. So that takes us to item eight, public hearings. First up is item 8A, receive public comment regarding a request to close the utility easement located on property addresses 815 and 817 North Jefferson Street, CC-21-50. Mr. Dorman, did we have good notice on this? Mr. Gross?
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Counselors. I'm Lance Gross, Planning Manager, Community Development. And this closing, easement closing before you tonight, they don't come along very often, so I'll just go over briefly the process. Easement closings don't go before Planning Commission, they come straight to City Council. And this application is associated with the next application on the agenda. It's the SUP for the pocket neighborhood. The hatch pattern on the map indicates the subject site. And you can see it's north of McElroy and west of Washington. The arrow points to the easements that's requested to be closed. It's a four-foot wide easement running from the edge of the lot to the east-west within that lot. At the bottom of the map, you'll see the green highlighted area. That's the location of the easement that is requested to be closed, and the rectangles on the right-hand side over here are the proposed single-family structures that are proposed to be constructed. And the reason why they want this removed, so that they can construct that house. And that's the end of the presentation from staff, and I know Kelly Harris is the applicant's representative. Are there any questions?
Counselors, any questions for Lance? I'm sorry, Lance, did I miss whether there are there any utilities in this easement? Is there anything in there?
Oh, I'm sorry. There are no utilities within that easement.
You probably already said that, or maybe you didn't. I don't know. All right. Hearing no questions, further questions from the council, I'll go ahead and at this point and open the public hearing. Who's here? Lance, or Kelly? Hi, Kelly.
Hi, how are y'all?
Good, how are you?
Good. I'm Kelly Harris with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry, here representing the property owners tonight. Like Lance said, this four-foot utility easement, it was originally granted with one of the original final plats in the city, so, and the structures weren't actually constructed in line with the lots that were plotted, and so therefore, the utilities weren't constructed in line with the lots either. So utilities didn't end up using that easement, and so we're just requesting to close that. Any questions?
I think we're good. Thanks, Kelly. I don't have anyone else signed up to speak at the public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing at this point. Lance, was there, no, there was no recommendation from Planning Commission on this. Does staff have a recommendation?
The recommendation is to approve the closing request.
Thank you, sir. Counselors, questions, comments, or motion?
Motion to close the requested utility easement on property addressed at 815 and 817 North Jefferson Street. Second.
We have a motion and a second to close this utility easement. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that request is approved. Item 8B is receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit to allow for construction of single-family residential homes at 815, 817, and 823 North Jefferson Street. Mr. Dorman, do we have good notice on this one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gross?
Yes. This is the companion item from the closing request that you just heard. It's a specific use permit, and the property is currently zoned RTM, and single-family construction is not allowed within RTM without an SUP. The hatch pattern on the map indicates the subject site. This is an aerial view looking to the northwest. The yellow polygon indicates the subject site. McElroy is down here on the bottom, running east and west, and North Washington is on the right-hand side. And this parking area is actually the location of the new incredible baseball stadium. And this is the site plan that was submitted. The existing single-family structures over here will be retained, and the five rectangles over here are the five single-family structures that are proposed. And the overall concept is for a pocket neighborhood which essentially surrounds a common space that all the tenants can share, and basically flanked by residential structures. There any questions?
So Lance, real quick, there's five buildings proposed on there, but only three addresses listed on my paperwork.
Yes.
Is that mine?
Those are the five addresses that we have right now for the application. Once those new structures will come in, they'll have new addresses.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Fair enough.
So there's going to be eight buildings on, eight individual, single-family residences on these three lots?
I believe actually nine. Yeah.
There's four existing, and they're building five more?
That's correct. Yeah, the lots are deep. I think they're, I know Kelly can probably answer this, but I think they're about 140 feet deep.
And what makes this single-family, as opposed to, I mean, that, to me, this is an apartment complex that you're building, just disconnected from each other.
In a way, except for their, the structures themselves are considered to be single-family structures. They have a kitchen, and I believe there's three to possibly four rooms per structure. So it's not as dense as what, you know, some developments that have come through recently, but they're all established as single-family structures, and the structures in the back are two stories.
Do they have parking requirements in this?
Yes. Yes. The parking actually will be within the, along Jefferson, and also the north, the northern boundary right up here.
So I guess my confusion is just around, like, if this was three residential, like, currently, if these three lots were currently run, zoned, single-family residential, you couldn't build eight, nine buildings on these three lots, correct?
That is correct. Yes.
Okay. So I'm confused why we even have to do an SUP, you know, because it's not residential. We're not building a single-family residential here.
The reason why is because the RTM zoning does allow single-family structures, but only with an SUP.
Okay. So it's the structure itself, even though...
The concept is...
The concept is not at all single-family.
Correct.
Okay. Further questions, counselors, for staff?
Where's access for those, the new structures that are going in? So the parking is on North Jefferson, but there, is there an alley, or how will they, where will those front face?
Okay. There, I know Kelly can go into a little bit more detail on this, however, yeah, there'll be access along the front, there's a sidewalk down here, and then the driveways, and then there'll be a series of sidewalks through here in this common area, which will connect both, both rows or sets of structures.
And Lance, all the houses face each other, correct? So the front door, so it's a community feel to it, so that there's, they're all facing one another?
That is correct.
To create that feeling.
Yes, that is correct.
So, what, oh, sorry. I was envisioning something different. So on Counselor Zanotti's comments, so the easternmost buildings will be front-facing to the west, and the western buildings will be front-facing to the east?
Correct.
Is that right? Okay.
Yes.
Got you. Got you. Okay. Thanks.
All right. If there's nothing further from the counselors for Lance, I'll go ahead and open a public hearing, and I'll ask Kelly to provide her comments at this point.
Good evening. Kelly Harris again with Keystone Engineering, located at 923 South Lowry. So you guys all touched on some very important topics. Our client is just wanting to create some infill development on this property. There's actually five existing structures. There's one all the way to the north that fronts to Tyler, so that will stay as well, and then we're adding the five just of that along the east property line. Yep. And so the properties in this area have a wide range of housing options. There's other single-family homes, duplexes, and then there's some small apartments. Mary, you nailed it, so it is a concept of apartments with that higher density. However, it gives somebody an alternative to living in an apartment and just a smaller footprint home. And then, yes, all the front doors will face to that center green space, so you have to walk by other homes to get to your house, and so that will just create that personal interaction as you're getting to your house. Really, the only reason that this is an SUP is because we needed the ability to construct a single-family style home on the property. Any other questions?
Kelly, will these, I mean, I assume they're rental units, so they'll be rented individually, the whole structure, each individual structure will be rented as one unit? There's not more than one unit in a structure?
Correct. They're all two-bedroom homes.
Well, I guess my question is, can they be sold at some point as a single-family home? Or is that the plan?
If somebody would go back and show that site plan, you can see we're still keeping the three different properties. You can see that there's those black bold lines, so it would be sold as those properties. So there's three structures on that north one, four in the middle one, and three on the south one.
Okay. It's an interesting concept.
It is. We don't see a lot of that in Stillwater yet.
And I assumed...
I like...
As I say, the density with all of these structures is still within the RTM zoning density requirements?
Yes.
It's actually a lot less than what could be there.
Sorry, Elaine.
No, you're fine. I'm excited to see some creativity in that area and another opportunity for a different type of housing situation. It meets a different set of demographics that we need, and I think we've talked about needing.
Thank you, Kelly. I don't have anyone else signed up for a public hearing on this item, so I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And Lance, there was a Planning Commission recommendation on this item, correct?
That's correct.
The Planning Commission made a recommendation by a vote of four to zero for approval.
All right. Counselors?
Motion to accept the Planning Commission recommendation to approve the specific use permit for the property located at 815, 817, and 823 North Jefferson Street.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to grant this SUP. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that specific use permit is approved. Item 8C, receive public comment regarding a request for a specific use permit to allow for physical therapy office in a commercial shopping zoning district at 2230 North Perkins Road. Mr. Gross?
Yes. This is the last SUP before you. Let's see, this property is zoned CS, commercial shopping, which requires an SUP for a healthcare and social service use. The hatch pattern on the map indicates the subject site. It's located within the Lake View Point Shopping Center, and the yellow polygon is where the location, the new location will be for this use. Takes up two bays. They are currently located here in the third bay from the east, so essentially, they're moving from the east portion to the west portion, and they're doubling the size. The reason why the SUP is needed is that the SUP is address-specific. Any questions?
I think we're good. I will, at this point, open the public hearing. I don't think we have anyone sign up. Do we have anyone sign up to speak? I'll close the public hearing at this time, and Lance, what was the Planning Commission's recommendation here?
The Planning Commission made a recommendation by a vote of five to zero for approval. The reason why the SUP is needed is that the SUP is address-specific. Any questions?
I think we're good. I will, at this point, open the public hearing. I don't think we have anyone sign up. Do we have anyone sign up to speak? I'll close the public hearing at this time, and Lance, what was the Planning Commission's recommendation here?
The Planning Commission made a recommendation by a vote of five to zero for approval.
Thank you. Counselors?
Motion to accept. The Planning Commission's recommendation to allow SUP at commercial shopping zoning district 2230 North Perkins Road.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that specific use permit is approved. All right. It's been a while since we had specific use permits that weren't marijuana dispensaries. Yeah.
No pun intended.
That takes us to item nine on the agenda, general orders. First up, we have an approval of a budget amendment reflecting the Stillwater Regional Airport's receipt of Airport Coronavirus Response and Relief Appropriations Act grant funds in the amount of a little more than a million dollars. Mr. Prigle?
Good evening. Paul Prigle, Airport Director. On February 22nd, City Council authorized Stillwater Regional Airport to make application through the Department of Transportation's Federal Aviation Administration's Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, or CHRISAs, what they're now calling it. On March 24th, we received word back that our application was accepted, and the final grant of $1,000,010,076 was awarded to the Stillwater Regional Airport to go towards operating expenses. So tonight, I bring before you a budget amendment which will reflect the receipt of those funds and allow us to further allocate those for airport operational needs. And so, happy to answer any questions.
Counselors?
It's always nice to see Mr. Prigle on the agenda.
One of these days, he's going to come here and ask you for money.
I know. I'm dreading that day really bad.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate you guys' hard work on getting all this paperwork and everything done.
Absolutely.
Counselors, is there a further discussion or a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the budget amendment reflecting receipt of $1,000,010,76 in Airport Coronavirus Response and Relief Appropriations Act funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that specific use permit is approved. All right. It's been a while since we had specific use permits that weren't marijuana dispensaries. Yeah.
No pun intended.
That takes us to item nine on the agenda, general orders. First up, we have an approval of a budget amendment reflecting the Stillwater Regional Airport's receipt of Airport Coronavirus Response and Relief Appropriations Act grant funds in the amount of a little more than a million dollars. Mr. Prigle?
Good evening. Paul Prigle, Airport Director. On February 22nd, City Council authorized Stillwater Regional Airport to make application through the Department of Transportation's Federal Aviation Administration's Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriation Act, or CHRISAs, what they're now calling it. On March 24th, we received word back that our application was accepted, and the final grant of $1,000,010,076 was awarded to the Stillwater Regional Airport to go towards operating expenses. So tonight, I bring before you a budget amendment which will reflect the receipt of those funds and allow us to further allocate those for airport operational needs. And so, happy to answer any questions.
Counselors?
It's always nice to see Mr. Prigle on the agenda.
One of these days, he's going to come here and ask you for money.
I know. I'm dreading that day really bad.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate you guys' hard work on getting all this paperwork and everything done.
Absolutely.
Counselors, is there a further discussion or a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the budget amendment reflecting receipt of $1,000,010,76 in Airport Coronavirus Response and Relief Appropriations Act funds.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the budget amendment. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that budget amendment is approved. Next up, we have approval of a budget amendment to appropriate $80,000 from available fund
The Community Center, and specifically the Project Heart building, have a history of plumbing issues. Aging infrastructure has caught up with us, and we are to the point where major repairs are needed. We had planned for this expense and had requested $80,000 in the 2021-22 capital budget. However, recent issues have forced us to make repairs as soon as possible. Cameras have detected collapsed plumbing lines. Project Heart has been advised it may be wise to find a backup site to prepare meals in case these issues force us to shut down before repairs can be made. While repairing plumbing to the Project Heart building, we will also repair Room 121 in the Community Center, which is adjacent to Project Heart. These lines have also collapsed, and the sink is currently non-functional, which is detrimental to renting our most utilized room in the facility. If approved tonight, the fiscal year 21-22 budget request for the same project would be rescinded, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Counselors?
Will all of this work be done by city staff?
No. We will have to bring in the plumbing experts.
All right. No, there being no further questions, Barbara, we appreciate you being here, and certainly sounds like we need to get these issues fixed as quickly as possible. Counselors, is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve a budget amendment to appropriate $80,000 from the available fund balance of the City Capital Fund to Community Resources for Repair of the Plumbing Situation at Project Heart and Room 121 of the Community Center.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this budget amendment. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that budget amendment is approved. Item 9C is approve engaging B T and Co. to perform an audit for the City of Stillwater and related trust authorities for fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021. Hello, Kristi?
Hello. Kristi Kluck, Finance Director. And staff is seeking the authorization to engage an audit firm to perform our fiscal year 2021 audit. City staff solicits proposals for audit services every three years with an annual review by our city's audit committee and also by the city council. The firm B T and Co. of Topeka, Kansas, had the successful proposal back in 2018. Typically, staff would have sought new audit proposals this spring. However, the city's audit committee is recommending a one-year extension of that engagement, and that's really due to the pandemic. So with the onset of the pandemic, we saw that audit firms quickly transitioned to a remote work environment, and they spent very minimal days onsite at client offices. So this is anticipated to continue during the course of the FY21 audit season, and there is concern that having to potentially onboard a new audit firm, while, while all audit firms are perfecting their remote audit protocol, you know, there's concern over that. And, and so, like I said, the, the city's audit committee is recommending a one-year extension to provide some time. The city staff has encountered no difficulties with B T and Co. The firm is timely with all of their information requests, and all deadlines have been met. Are there any questions?
What is, is the fee for the coming year same as the previous?
Yes. They, they did say they would honor the existing fee, or the FY20 fee. We are adding a P F C audit. That is our new passenger facility charge at the airport. We are required to have a specific audit for that, and so they have agreed to conduct that audit as well.
Counselors, further questions?
Just a comment of how amazing the consequences of the pandemic just reach into everything. Amazing. Motion to approve the Audit Committee's recommendation, is it time?
Yeah.
That B T and Co. be engaged to perform the audit for the City of Stillwater and related trust authorities for the fiscal year ending June 30th, 2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve extending this engagement. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that extension is approved. Our second audit item on 9D is approve the City of Stillwater Single Audit Report for Fiscal Year ended June 30th, 2020. Kristi?
Yes. So included in your packet is the Single Audit Report for Fiscal Year 2020. Because the city spent more than $750,000 of federal funds during the fiscal year, we were required to have a single audit. A single audit is performed, was performed by B T and Co., and that was in conjunction with our financial audit, and included tests of compliance with federal grant agreements. The audit firm did render an unmodified opinion, which is the best kind of opinion that you can get, and there were no instances of material weaknesses found or significant deficiencies, and there were no instances of non-compliance found. So the city's audit committee met on March 12th to review the Single Audit Report with the audit firm, and it is the Audit Committee's recommendation that the city council approve the 2020 Single Audit Report.
Thank you, Kristi. Counselors, any questions?
Motion to approve City of Stillwater Single Audit Report for Fiscal Year ended June 30th, 2020.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this item. I'll just say, before we vote, that keeping up with the federal guidelines on how to spend these monies and, and keeping all that stuff straight is no small feat, and having an unmodified opinion in, in an audit like this is, is impressive, and we appreciate the work that you all have done to, to make sure that's the case.
All right. Thank you.
At this time, we'll vote on the motion to approve this Single Audit Report. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that Single Audit Report is approved. Item 9E, approve bid recommendations for repair of properties damaged during the May 2020 floods. We're still back on this money?
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Now, it's just the event that keeps on giving. The May 2019 event required we make temporary repairs at two locations, at Lake McMurtry and one at the Lakeside Memorial Golf Course. FEMA reimbursed the City of Stillwater for those repairs, and then provided funds to do permanent repairs, and provided design assistance for that. They gave us $65,422 for those repairs. After we bid the projects, we found that wasn't enough money. The way that project, or the way that program works, is if we do it the way FEMA tells us to do it, and it floods, the next flood, if it doesn't work, they'll pay us to do the repair and then do, do, do it again. If we don't do the projects, and do something different, and they fail when we have the next flood, then they won't even pay us for the temporary repairs. So we're kind of locked into this. Rob is, is in the process of asking them for the additional funds, and we have identified that there are excess funds and the capital contingency for this additional cost. And the projects were bid separately and also with a tie that if you were low on all three, and would you give us the discount, and that wasn't the case. So Rooster Tail Construction was low on the Gun Range Access Road. They were also low on the West Lake McMurtry Access Road. And then Haskell Women was low on the repair to Lakeside Golf Course Bridge. Before I give you our recommendation, do you have any questions?
Counselors?
We're seeking the additional dollars from FEMA. We just don't have them yet, or we don't know that we'll receive them.
Rob is making a strong pitch for the dollars, but I don't, I don't know if we've heard anything yet. We're hopeful that we'll receive the money at some point in the future, but we would not want to guarantee that to you tonight.
And is there no, there's no rules about if we pay for it now, like it's reimbursable? They can, we can receive them after the fact, or?
I do not know of anything that would preclude them from giving us money after the fact. Rob, is that correct? Yeah. Rob says that that's true.
Okay.
So our choices are just fix them using the money they already gave us, and if they fail again, they will pay for it again? Is that what you said?
Yes. If we use their money and then plus our own?
Oh, okay.
Then we, basically, we have to do it the way they're approved.
Okay.
So one, one option we looked at was, okay, well, some of these ruleies, we'd probably be okay if, if we didn't do anything to them, but it's kind of, we have to do them all or, or none of them.
Okay.
So we would be trying to take the money and, you know, maybe do one or two, but we can't do that.
So we need, we need to do all three projects?
That's correct.
Okay. And we might get the hundred, extra $124,000 back from them, but we might not.
That's correct.
We filed an appeal with FEMA and asked them to re-review the bids that were provided because their money's came back so low.
Hmm.
So they're re-reviewing the bids, and they will come back. These are small projects, and they will fund these 100%.
Rob is just letting us know that we're appealing their, their bid, what they said it was worth, and we're placing that in our bids and said, here's how much it's really going to cost. Will you guys change the, change the money amount, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
But again, there's no guarantee that they say yes. I mean, worst-case scenario, we're out $124,000, but we have guarantees on all of these, on these projects.
So actually, the city has been paid for in advance what they feel the cost of the project was initially. That's the total, that $65,000 for those projects. When we kept, when we got into the project, we found out that we were at, I believe it was $197. That was total cost of the projects plus 10%. We're $124,000 off.
Right.
So we submitted it to them. Because each project is by itself an individual project, and under $132,000 total value, we are eligible for 100% of the cost. So we have the appeal in to recover the cost for each one of those projects for a total of the total cost of the repairs for all the sites.
Yeah. Hopefully, they see it the same way. Right?
We feel that they will. We talked with the state. State's actually doing our bidding with FEMA on the appeal, and they have seen this a few times where it's come back and it's been off. For example, FEMA doesn't take into consideration traffic control that will have to be put in place while construction's being done. They have no way to put a value on that, so that's left off. But we know what that value is based on the bid. So we've, again, sent it back to them, told them this is what we come back with, and they're reviewing it now. We will go ahead and spend the money now, pay to get the projects done, so that they will be eligible if damage ever occurs at those locations in the future, and then we can receive the monies on the backside.
Out of curiosity, the, the guarantee, or whatever it is on these, on these projects, if they get damaged again in the future, is that an, an infinite guarantee, or is there some kind of limitation on that?
If FEMA, the C R C, the Resource Center, if they provide you mitigation measures, and that's what they did on each one of these projects, they provided us mitigation measures and said that if you do this, we feel that next time you have this type of event at this level, you won't have damages. If you do, we will come back in and we will help you recover from that, and we will pay for that to be repaired.
Yeah.
If we don't, and we send the money back, and we say we're not making any repairs whatsoever, there's, there's no help in the future for those locations.
Right. Yeah.
But what does that make sense? I mean, if they're going to repair it, they're going to say, well, we want to make sure we don't have to repair it again.
Yeah.
And if you do it the way they say, then it's only fair, they, okay, you did it the way we said to do it, we'll pay you.
When is the, when would these projects start if we approved the bids?
Very quickly. We have to have them, I believe, under construction by June or completed by the end of the June.
It's supposed to be completed by the first June.
Oh, okay.
So we'll be moving very quickly.
Yeah. That sounds like somebody needs to make a motion.
[laughing]. Well, let, let me make a suggestive motion. Would ask that you make a motion to award a unit price contract for Projects 1 and 2 to Rooster Tail Construction at the bid unit cost of $101,906, with authorization of a 10% contingency for a total amount of $112,096.60. Further, that you award a contract for Project 3 to Haskell Women at the bid unit cost for $71,170, authorized a 10% contingency for a total amount of $78,287, and authorize the city manager to sign the contracts and related documents.
Counselors? Thoughts on Monty's suggested motion?
Motion to approve staff recommendations post haste.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Excuse me. I choked up over this one.
I got you on that.
Yeah. We have a motion, yeah. It's finally, we're almost finally done with this flood. There is a motion and a second to approve the staff recommendation on this item. Teresa, can you please call the roll?
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, those bid recommendations are approved.
Thank you.
Thank you, Monty. Thank you, Rob. Item 9F is request from the Renewable Energy Task Force to extend the deadline to December 21st, 2021. Becky Taylor?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Becky Taylor, Chief Civic Innovation Officer. The original deadline for the Renewable Energy Task Force recommendation to council was March 31st, 2021. However, the task force was delayed in starting due to the pandemic, and then the inability to meet via Zoom as an open meeting in late fall. Now that Zoom meetings are allowed, the task force has established a meeting schedule and has met three times as a group. The Renewable Energy Task Force is requesting approval to extend the deadline from March 31st, 2021 to December 31st, 2021, at which time the task force will present recommendations to council. Action will be taken under the resolutions portion of the agenda, but I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Counselors?
There's really a lot to talk about.
Yeah.
So I think that's a really reasonable.
All right.
I'll, with, you know, the administration change at the federal level, we may see opportunities that we hadn't seen previously potentially come up from a funding perspective or implementation or other support. So maybe as disappointing as it can be to kind of start later, perhaps there's opportunity that will come from that late start.
Our fingers are crossed.
All right. Thank you, Becky.
Thank you.
That does take us to the resolutions section of the agenda. Item 10A is Resolution CC-2021-08, which is a resolution authorizing the city manager to change the name of Airport Industrial Road to Hargus Road. Comments, questions, or a motion on this item, counselors?
Such a nice thing to do. Really, really like it.
I think it's a, a fitting, like you said, a fitting tribute, and that area to the airport is, is really a great spot just because the, that partnership has been so vital to keep that commercial service here in town, so.
Yes. As well as the training place for the cowboy.
Yeah. The flight center and the, yeah, absolutely.
Motion to adopt Resolution CC-2021-8.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt Resolution CC-2021-8. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti? Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is approved. And on behalf of the entire city council, we want to extend, again, extend our appreciation to both Burns End and for their service to our community over the last thirteen, fourteen years, however long it's been at this point. All right, item nine, no, excuse me, ten B, Resolution CC dash twenty-twenty-one dash nine, a resolution amending the deadline for submission of a plat, of a plan to the city council from the Renewable Energy Task Force. Counselors?
Motion to adopt Resolution CC twenty-twenty-one dash nine.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that resolution is adopted, and we look forward to hearing those recommendations from the task force here at the end of the year. Reports from officers and boards. Mr. McNichol, no, I'm sorry, Mr. Dorman, let's start with you. Thank you, Mr. McNichol.
Yes, sir. Thank you. We're happy to announce that construction of the Perkins Road waterline relocation project is complete. This project was necessary to eliminate conflicts for ODOT's reconstruction of Perkins Road from McElroy to Lakeview. Thank you to all city staff and crews who worked hard to get this process, project finished. City would also like to thank all the businesses and residents that were affected by this project for their patience and cooperation. And I did tell you a couple of weeks ago that, uh, construction on that was going to commence shortly after OSU graduation. However, ODOT has had a hiccup in some engineering, um, and it may now be next fall before that project commences. And probably late in the fall. So, um, not, there are also some private utilities that are still relocating along the road. People still need to be careful, but, uh, it'll be a bit longer before that construction commences.
Well, I prefer they figure out the hiccup before they actually start tearing stuff up, which is a good thing. I don't want to have already have lanes closed or something before they figure it out. All right, uh, counselors, Vice Mayor.
I do have a really interesting program to announce. If you're looking for ways to make your home more environmentally friendly, join the Yard by Yard Community Resiliency Project. This project aims to make a difference by recognizing individuals who bring earth-friendly practices to their yards. Some of these practices may be maintaining a pesticide-free yard, growing her, herbs, fruits, or vegetables in your yard, using rain barrels to capture rainwater, and you can get your rain barrels from the city, you know that, and other ideas. Learn how to get your car, yard certified at okconservation.org slash Yard by Yard, or contact the Payne County Conservation District.
Cool.
Interesting.
So we've got tomato plants ready to go in. I assume that'll qualify me in some way?
You should be in competition with Mayor Joyce and his family. Put more than tomato plants in your yard.
All right. Counselor Zalati? Zalati, I kind of combined you there.
Combined us too. That's all right. We'll take it. The Stillwater City Council runoff election for seat four is tomorrow. If you haven't already, now is a good time to get to know your candidates. That's Ariel Ross and Kristy Hopkins. The Stillwater Chamber of Commerce, the League of Women Voters, and the Stillwater News Press have worked together to put on a series of candidate forums. Recordings are available on the chamber's Facebook page. For additional election information, contact the Payne County Election Board, and please, please, please go out and vote tomorrow.
Absolutely. Thank you. Counselor Wedlake?
Yes, sir. So new CDC guidelines state that people who are fully vaccinated can travel safely within the United States. If you're looking to get away, consider flying through Stillwater Regional Airport. They offer free parking, free parking. Short lines and rates have never been better. If you do decide to travel, please continue to protect others by following COVID-19 safety precautions, and remember that face coverings are required in all airports, per federal law. Uh, go to aa.com to, and use airport code SWO to book your next flight.
Absolutely. Sounds like fun. Counselor Jaloski?
Yes. I'd like to thank all the residents who attended the Public Visioning Workshop for the Sixth Avenue Corridor Study on March thirty-first. We had a really great turnout. I think there was about ninety, um, folks out of our community that came and joined us that night. Um, we also want to remind everyone that you can still participate by asking questions and sharing ideas for the corridor on the project Speak Up Stillwater page. Go to speakup.stillwater.org and click on the Sixth Avenue Corridor Study tile to help shape the future of this important part of our community. So I think we did a lot of, um, different activities with the consultants that night, and I think some of those questions and things are up on the, on the page so that you can participate in answering some of those same questions.
Yeah, absolutely. That was a, um, a good event, and it was a good turnout. Looking forward to more discussion on that topic. All right, I have a note here to tell you about the Stillwater Environmental Programs and Stormwater Divisions holding the annual Trash Off Event on Saturday, April tenth, from nine AM to twelve PM. This event's a great opportunity to take to the streets and show that litter is not okay. Volunteers should RSVP with a number in their party by April seventh. Individuals are welcome to participate. Uh, our, individuals are also welcome to participate. April seventh is the day after tomorrow, by the way. Uh, and for more information, you can go to stillwater.org/news or visit the city of Stillwater's Facebook page. All right, that takes us to item thirteen on the agenda, which is appointments. We have, uh, three boards or committees that have openings or expiring renewals. Uh, first up is the Audit Committee. John Killam, uh, served, uh, three terms on that Audit Committee, and, and frankly, his experience and, uh, work he does here in town is, uh, I think, a great asset to the Audit Committee, and he's indicated a willingness to serve again. So I'd like to nominate John Killam for another term on the Audit Committee.
Second. Are you going to do them all together?
No, I think we have to do each board separately, right?
Okay. Second.
We have a motion in a second to appoint John Killam to another term on the Audit Committee. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, John Killam is appointed, uh, to a new term on the Audit Committee. Next up on the Airport Advisory Board, Chuck Fleischer has served five terms and has indicated he would like a break from the Airport Committee. We certainly appreciate his work over the years with that group. Uh, I would, we've got a couple of different folks on file with applications. I would like to nominate Bill Arrington to take, uh, that seat on the Airport Advisory Board.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Bill Arrington is appointed to a spot on the Airport Advisory Board. Thank you for your willingness to serve. And then on the Public Housing Authority Board, Sue Bonner's term is expiring, and she has indicated a desire to be reappointed to that board, and so I will nominate Sue for a new term on the Public Housing Authority.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, Sue Bonner is appointed to a new term on the Public Housing Authority. Thank you again, everyone, for your willingness to help on those city boards. If you're interested in any, um, in service on any city boards, there are potentially openings at any point, so please go check those out on our website and submit an application so that you can be considered, uh, when, when seats do open up. That is the end of the city council agenda. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Mayor Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Counselor Zanotti?
Yes.
Counselor Wedlake?
Yes.
Counselor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the city council meeting is now adjourned. At this time, I will call to order the Stillwater Electric Utilities Authority for its April fifth, twenty-twenty-one meeting. Did I say electric utilities? The Stillwater Utilities Authority. I don't know what I said. I got to pay attention when I'm speaking. Anyway, I'm calling the SUA meeting to order for April fifth, twenty-twenty-one. On the consent docket, we have meeting minutes. Trustees?
Motion to approve the consent docket.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the consent docket is approved. First up on general orders, we have an approval of a make-whole payment agreement between the Stillwater Utilities Authority and the Grand River Dam Authority. I think Lauren Smith is here or is online to tell us about that. Hi, Lauren.
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director. During the February twenty-second, uh, twenty-twenty-one SUA meeting, the trustees authorized a budget amendment that increased the electric generation natural gas expenditure with a corresponding increase to electric GRDA energy payment revenue. This was due to the unexpected increase in fuel costs to operate the Stillwater Energy Center through the extreme weather event that occurred in February. As described in the approval report, SUA was able to cash flow the payment to the natural gas vendor with a partial energy payment being advanced from GRDA, uh, in use of the reserve fund. It was also stated that the reserve funds would be replenished upon receipt of the full energy payment from GRDA. GRDA's initial settlement for the energy payment did not fully replenish the revenue funds as expected due to mechanisms in our natural, natural gas contract. Once notified, GRDA worked with the Southwest Power Pool to provide a make-whole payment to recover the true cost of the energy produced. GRDA has prepared an agreement providing for a make-whole payment in which they will wire transfer four million one hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-six cents, which will replenish the reserve fund used to pay the natural gas bill. I have a recommendation here, and that's to, we recommend the execution of the make-whole payment agreement, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Lauren. I think my only question would be, why in the world would we not approve the?
For once, I get to bring you good news.
You do. That's, uh, it is great that you guys were able to work that out, and we certainly appreciate GRDA for, um, making this money available for the extenuating circumstances. Trustees, any further questions, or is there a motion on this item?
Motion to approve the make-whole payment agreement between the SUA and GRDA, providing for a make-whole payment of four million one hundred and sixty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-two dollars and thirty-six cents, which will replenish the SUA reserve funds used to pay the natural gas bill during the February twenty-twenty-one winter weather event.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve this agreement. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, that make-whole payment agreement is approved. Okay, I skipped over item three on the agenda, so we're going to skip back and do public comment. We do have a couple of folks signed up for public comment on items, uh, on our agenda tonight. So I am going to ask, I assume Robin Cornwell is available online for public comment? I probably threw everybody off back in the control room. Here we go. Hello, Robin.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
We can.
Okay, uh, my name is Robin Cornwell, twenty-two, twenty-three North Crescent Drive. I'm here today as a representative of Stillwater's Renewable Energy Task Force, an advisory committee consisting of Stillwater citizens. The goal of our group is to help the city of Stillwater develop a plan for clean energy. We reviewed the DG tariff and have agreed on the following position statement. The proposed distributed generation net energy metering tariff seems fair. It provides more of a financial incentive for residential DG customers than under the SUA's current buy-all, sell-all policy. Another positive feature of the proposal is that the service availability fee recovers at least some of the fixed costs associated with DG customers being connected to Stillwater Electric Utility. A downside is that, under the proposed policy, there is not as much incentive for non-residential customers, that is, general service and power and light secondary customer classes, to adopt DG. It appears from the draft document that the incentive for these customers to adopt DG would increase if utility rates were adjusted to more closely match cost of service. However, because the focus of the task force discussion was on the draft DG policy, consideration of any utility rate changes to more closely reflect the cost of services beyond our purview. The task force would also support the analysis of median customer bills in future cost of service studies as opposed to average customer bills analytics, which were used in this study. The city of Stillwater has resolved to transition to one hundred percent clean energy. The task force supports the proposed DG tariff as a positive step towards clean energy goals, respectfully submitted by myself and the seven other task force members who attended our meeting last Thursday. And I can read the names, um, of the attendees if it would be appropriate, if you want to hear them.
Sure.
And, okay, uh, attended last Thursday's meeting and, and supporting this statement were the following. Ellen Tree, Dana Cole, Deanna Homer, Henri Yuhara, Christine Waits, Madeline Goddard, myself, and Pat Darlington.
Thank you so much, Robin. We appreciate you, um, providing that statement and providing that public comment.
I'm happy to be here. Thanks.
Thank you. Up next with the public comment, we do have Henri Yuhara.
Can everyone see me?
Yes, we can.
I'm getting Robin Cornwell feedback here. Let's see how I adjust this. Oh, I'm getting my own, I'm the speaker, so, okay, let's see if I can just do gallery view. All right, um, uh, good afternoon. My name is Henri Yuhara, and, uh, I'm a resident of Stillwater and a member of the Renewable Energy Task Force. Uh, I'm here to, uh, make a personal statement regarding the SUA agenda item, SUA dash twenty-one dash ten, the DG rate structure. My statement's going to take a, a couple of extra minutes from the three-minute limit. I'm hoping you'll allow me that, that extra time, since I tried to time my statement, and I couldn't rush, rush through it faster than four and a half minutes, so. Would that be allowed?
Please go ahead.
Thank you very much. Um, I'm here to give you my personal assessment of the proposed DG rate to advocate for a DG policy that will be in alignment with the city's aim to move toward a more climate-friendly community. I believe we need to come up with a policy and set a rate that makes it economically viable for residents looking to reduce their carbon footprint, consider rooftop solar as a practical option while mitigating any material costs from shifting to non-DG customers. First off, I want to make it clear that the proposed DG rate is an improvement over the current buy-all, sell-all policy that makes residential solar totally non-viable. And so I appreciate the effort that LM Better Consulting and the city staff have spent toward developing this proposal. I know that they've spent a lot, a lot of time on it. I fully support the following points from the DG rate proposal. Number one, net metering. Number two, crediting any net excess power generated by DG at the wholesale avoided cost rate. Number three, charging an additional fee that compensates or covers some fixed costs of operating and maintaining the electrical infrastructure. The basis for this is that even if The basis for this is that even if a DG customer consumes no net power from the SUA, that customer still benefits from being connected to the grid in a variety of ways, from being provided backup power to being net metered. The issue is, or the difficulty is, in deciding what this fee should be. The proposal uses an average residential electric bill to determine this fee. It breaks down the bill into fixed and variable costs in an attempt to calculate fixed costs associated with production and distribution of power over the grid for an average customer. The study concluded this cost to be $42. DG customers will then pay a minimum of $51.80 a month, after including the monthly customer service fee of $9.80. I raised two issues that I believe should be studied before the fee is actually adopted. One is the fact that a typical residential customer does not pay that average bill that was used in the analysis. Another is, which fixed cost should really be recovered, or attempted to be recovered? I submit what would make sense would be to recover the fixed costs associated with operating and maintaining the SUA infrastructure. These are costs that the SUA actually incurs. So, the cost-of-service study, I believe, shows this to be approximately $28 per month per customer. If the SUA trustees still prefer the proposed rate methodology, I suggest that the median electric bill be used as the benchmark rather than the average to determine the service availability fee. Based on electrical bill distribution data received from the SUA, and looking at the cost-of-service study, a median electric bill would better represent a typical customer. Finally, after reviewing the various DG rates in Oklahoma and studying various trade-offs, I believe the best rate structure that addresses the concerns of the SUA but doesn't discourage DG adoption would be to implement net metering at the retail rate, and making the DG charge to try to recover fixed costs variable based on either the install capacity or the actual DG power generated by that customer. If the DG generates no power, for example, basically that customer is a regular standard customer, and the fee should be set at zero, no extra charge, because he's consuming the power just like a regular customer would from SUA. If the DG customer generates enough power that it, that he or she doesn't consume any SUA power, that DG charge should be set at the maximum DG rate where it would recover the SUA fixed operating costs. I understand there may be a budget issue associated with making any modifications to this DG rate recommendation. If this is the case, I offer my time to come up with, to help resolve these issues, and I don't think it would take more than a few weeks to come up with a conclusion. In any case, I will be providing you with further analysis in graphical form in the next week, so you can see more easily what the trade-offs are between the various DG rate structures. The reason I wasn't able to present it now is, I've been thinking about this over the last two weeks since I saw the DG rate proposal, and it's, I keep on coming up with new revelations, so I'm sorry that I haven't been able to provide you with that today. If the city seriously believes the residential renewable power is a net benefit to the community, then it should take into account the benefit of reduced carbon emissions and increased home values that translate into increased property taxes, in coming up with a DG policy and not focus solely on fixed cost recovery. My hope is that we don't continue to discourage DG adoption after the next policy is implemented. I attached three files that provide further background information for your review, including a canvas of DG fees being charged by other utilities around the state, a February SUA residential bill distribution data, and I also provide a real-life example of what impact this proposal will have on a solar panel owner, Dana Cole, who is currently being charged under the buy-all-sell-all policy. I compare it to the original net metering policy that was in effect prior to buy-all-sell-all and to the proposed new DG rate structure presented, that will be presented today. I realize Mr. Cole is an atypical SUA customer who consumes significantly less than an average customer, not because his solar, not because of his solar panels, but because he's gone all-in trying to reduce his carbon footprint through home improvements and lifestyle choices. He's the type of customer that we want to encourage with the next DG rate implementation. He's even considering upgrading his home to add or replace his old solar panels because they're not putting out that much power, but he's gonna wait until he hears what the new DG rate implementation will be. Thank you very much for your time, and I hope you were able to also take a look at the documents that I provided Patty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Yuahara. We appreciate the analysis that you've done and the work that you've put into the information that you provided tonight and that you sent out to us. All right, that does take us, we appreciate both of you for the public comment and for the folks who have participated in this project, which we'll hear more about, under item, the next item on the agenda, which is discussion of this distributed rate generation tariff, and we'll go back to Lauren Smith.
Good evening, trustees. Lauren Smith, Electric Utility Director again. Lisa Vedder with LM Better Consulting is here to provide an overview of our proposed distributed generation tariff and the steps we took to arrive at this point. Staff is not requesting any action tonight on this topic, rather based on trustee feedback from this meeting. We just like some guidance and possibly some direction to prepare a resolution for adoption on the April 19th, 2021 meeting establishing a DG rate structure. So with that, I will pass it over to Lisa, and she can begin her presentation.
Good evening. Can I show my screen? So, can everybody hear me, and can everybody see the screen okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. So, good evening, everyone. As Lauren said, I'm here to present the results of a very extensive stakeholder engagement process. I'm going to give you a little refresher about where we started, and then explain the recommendation that we came up with. Again, I'm Lisa Vedder of LM Better Consulting. I have over 30 years' experience in the utility industry. I'm a rate design expert, cost-of-service expert. I also do regulatory support and financial analyses, expert testimony. I'm a certified internal auditor. I also have a certification and control self-assessment. And then, my undergrad is actually in industrial engineering, so I look at these types of issues from an engineering perspective, but I also have a master's in public administration from Harvard University. So, a little bit of background to remind everyone how we got here tonight. The existing buy-all-sell-all distributed generation rate was effective in April 2018. The stakeholder feedback was not positive. There was a lack of community endorsement, and some of the feedback was, it was just too complicated. The bill wasn't understandable, a lot of confusion, and the stakeholders approached the city to get some sort of change. So, in November 12th, on November 12th, 2020, we held a public workshop. We had an extensive stakeholder outreach program, and then based on all the feedback we got and all the work we did, we came up with the proposed revised distributed generation tariff that we're presenting tonight, and we released last week. This is a timeline that shows that there are, a lot of work went into this. The internal team of the city staff and I had a kickoff meeting on September 22nd. I spoke to the trustees on November 2nd, and then between then and now, we've had a lot of online engagement, Speak Up Stillwater page, we've had people email and call, and we've held meetings. We met with the Renewable Energy Task Force to discuss our proposal as well. So, the video was posted on, the YouTube video of the workshop that we held was posted on the city's website and viewed 79 times. We put flyers in bills announcing the engagement and announcing there's a survey to take on distributed generation. The slide shows that we had 44 people respond to the surveys. We had six public questions, one submitted an idea, we had voicemail messages, handwritten comments on bills, and a lot of feedback. The statistics on the right show that the site was visited over 550 times, and there were, according to the website's statistics, 435 aware visitors, so that meant people were looking through different things. To remind everyone what we're talking about, because it's been a while, you know, what is distributed generation? Technically, it is an energy-producing system located on the customer's side of the meter. Typically, it's solar panels, rooftop solar panels. But according to the city of Stillwater tariff, biomass, wind, and even hydropower are all considered distributed generation. But right now, all your customers who have distributed generation either have solar panels, and there is a customer that has a wind turbine. One of the feedback items we got was, there's confusion about the word tariff. So, this slide is just to kind of get everyone on the same page. In this context, a tariff is a schedule of rates or charges of a public utility, a written schedule that sets forth the rates and the rules associated with administration of the rate plan. A rate is a number. It's a number in a bill, like 3 cents a kilowatt hour, $9.80 per customer per month. A lot of, in, if you're not an expert like me, the terms seem quite interchangeable. A lot of people refer to rates when they mean tariffs, and a lot of people refer to tariffs when they mean rate. One important fact to know is that in this context, it is not a tax. Tariff that I use in this context is not a tax. It's a separate thing. It's a, it's a schedule that sets forth rules concerning rates to be charged. So, a little bit of background, your current tariff is what is considered a buy-all-sell-all. And under a buy-all-sell-all rate design, the two transactions are separate. The customer still gets all its energy from the utility at a retail rate, and 100% of the output of its distributed generation facility is sold to the utility at a wholesale rate. So you can see there's two separate meters in this graphic. Net energy metering is a little different. It nets out the production from the consumption. So, the little blue electric signs in the house are trying to show, are in an attempt to show that some of the energy produced by the solar panels will be used on-site. Any excess will be returned to the utility, and any, like at night, when there's no sun, the energy will be purchased from the utility, and that's those red arrows at the bottom. Again, under the proposed redesign of the tariff for Stillwater, we're still using two So back to the stakeholder engagement process. This slide gives some highlights of what we found. The number-one response, bar all, was that respondents do not support cross subsidies of solar customers. They also don't want their electric rates to increase. So, by and large, that was the message heard loud and clear. With respect to the tariff, respondents overwhelmingly prefer net energy metering over buy-all-sell-all. And when asked how to recover the shortfall that net energy metering would create, they supported a wires charge, and a wires charge that was assessed on distributed generation customers. The pie chart on the right shows the actual results that a lot of people prefer net energy metering over buy-all-sell-all, but a small portion prefer buy-all-sell-all over net energy So, another kind of refresher slide, I talked about the fact that if the city were to switch to net energy metering, there would potentially be a fixed cost under recovery. And again, that arises due to the current nature of your retail rate design. So, the bar on the far left shows the results from the cost-of-service study that was performed. The light aqua box on the bottom, the first section of the bar represents the customer service portion of the charge. The darker blue represents the distribution, fixed distribution charges. The gray on top of that represents fixed production charges, and then the yellow at the top represents variable. So that kind of shows that most of your costs are fixed. Very little of your, you know, the smallest margin of your costs are variable, which means that they would change with the amount of energy you produce and sell. Your retail rate structure is the second bar, and that shows that you're currently, for residential customers, recovering the bulk of your costs through variable charges. You have a very low $9.80 a month fixed charge for residential customers. Under the buy-all-sell-all tariff, which is the bar, the third bar over, you're, the customer would see no change, or doesn't see any change, because the transactions are separate. However, if you were to implement net energy metering, if you don't implement some sort of charge, that customer would only be paying maybe $9.80 a month for service, and the utility would be under-recovering its charges. So, under the new rate design that we're proposing, we use net energy metering with a fixed monthly charge that we're referring to as a service availability fee. It's a fixed charge per customer per month, based on the type of customer that they are. The consumption that they use is netted against their solar generation. A unique feature of this tariff design is that for excess energy generated and returned to the grid, the customer receives the wholesale energy rate. Similarly, for excess energy they use, they only pay the wholesale energy rate. And the reason behind that is so that we're not hitting them twice. In theory, the fixed service availability fee should recover the fixed cost of that customer being on the system. So any extra energy they use, by charging more than a wholesale rate, you would be potentially double recovering fixed charges. So this graphic kind of shows how a residential bill would look under the cost-of-service, under the current retail tariff with no distributed generation, under the current tariff with the current buy-all-sell-all distributed generation tariff, and then the two bars, or the three bars at the right, show the proposed new tariff at three different levels of installed capacity, 3 kilowatts, 5 kilowatts, and 10 kilowatts. And what you see is that the striped purple bars, that $42 customer charge, service availability fee, and then the dark purple shows that the customer's either buying additional energy from the grid or receiving compensation for giving excess energy to the grid, and in all cases, the customer is better off than the current buy-all-sell-all arrangement. This is just a tabular presentation of that same information. I know people are, you know, some people like tables, some people like pictures, so this is exactly the same information that shows the average monthly residential bill under each of these different rate design structures. So at 960 kilowatt hours, a current residential customer pays about $113 a month. As you go to the right, under the current buy-all-sell-all, a customer with a 3-kilowatt distributed generation system would lower that bill to around $104.84. The same size array, under the proposed DG tariff, the customer's bill would be reduced to just under $70, and then the other two columns show at a 5-kilowatt or a 10-kilowatt, the result. This slide shows the same information at 560 kilowatt hours, just to show that it does matter. I mean, you're I mean, you're designing a tariff around an average customer, and so customers that use a lot more than the average or customers that use a lot less than the average have different outcomes. And that's what this slide shows, that, you know, the lower amount of power you use, you know, the benefit starts to go away. But at 560 kilowatt hours, there still is benefit to the customers under the new tariff design. And then again, this is the tabular information where you see that at 560 kilowatt hours, a residential customer has an average bill of about $70 a month, and under all situations, they're better off under the new tariff proposal. Now, I will say that we did evaluate the impact using actual data on all the current distributed generation customers that Stillwater has. And with one exception, and that is Mr. Cole, every customer would see lower bills under the proposed tariff. We were proposing the following transition, that if adopted, the rates go into effect July 1st. The customers would execute a new interconnection agreement and commence billing after July 1st service. And then if a customer does not execute a new interconnection agreement, they would be migrated back to their normal rate schedule as of July 1st. So, based on the results of this process, we would recommend that the trustees consider adopting a distributed generation net energy metering rate design that includes a fixed monthly service availability fee for distributed generation customers. Questions?
All right. Thank you very much.
Did I stop sharing my screen? I don't know.
You can. I don't know if you asked that or if you did.
Does anybody want to see any of the slides potentially to talk about?
Trustees, any questions about the slides?
Oh, I'm good.
I think we're good. We've got the report in front of us.
Okay.
Doesn't have the graphs that the slide does, but we've got the tables. Trustees, any questions?
I think my question is, as Lisa has recommended, adopting the net energy meter with a fixed wires fee assessed to the DG customers, that does not lock us into the fee tonight? Is that correct?
Yeah.
I should mention, you know, the fees that we have included in the tariff design represent the cost-of-service-based fee. You can set the fee at any level, you know, you have the discretion to do that. However, we were also responding to feedback about avoiding cross subsidies. So the level we set that service availability fee is an attempt to avoid cross subsidies.
In other words, an attempt to be fair to all customers.
Yes.
Which is one of our objectives.
So, is that 40, you calculated at $42 the service availability fee in this study? Is that based on the same data, the same calculations as our cost-of-service study?
Yes.
So I think one of the public comments commented that those numbers were different in the two studies. Is that just looking at different numbers? Or why is there confusion about whether those rates are this, whether those fixed costs are different in these two different studies?
There, I took the data right from the study, so perhaps it was just, you know, presented in a different, based on a different kilowatt hour. I mean, there's a lot of ways to present this data, but it is literally the same data.
Okay.
I think Mr. Uhara's comment was that actual SUA costs, according to the cost-of-service study, are approximately $28 a month per customer.
Yeah, that's a big difference.
And that's without the fixed production or fixed distribution.
Yeah, that's just the customer charge.
Yeah.
I think that number he's pulling is, so it means that for a residential customer, that you're only charging $9.80 for a customer charge, and it should be more like $28 for residential customers. But that doesn't include the fixed production and distribution cost. And when we looked at it, it's roughly about $70 a month of fixed cost for a residential customer, for an average residential customer.
Well, wait. Now I'm confused again. So if it's $70 a month fixed cost for residential customers, why is this number 42?
Because we didn't think it was equitable to charge the full $28 customer charge to residential customers with DG, since residential customers without DG don't pay that charge.
But they do in the rate.
Everybody pays $9.80 for that portion of the rate, whether you have DG or not. Everybody should be paying $28.
I see what you're saying. Okay. Now, okay, so how does this dovetail, Lauren, with our, with the rate study that we've got and the proposed rate changes, which are supposed to move more of the fixed costs to a fixed bill rather than moving them out of the variable structure?
As it relates to the DG rate we're proposing?
Yes.
Yes. So like Lisa said, we took those numbers right out of the cost-of-service study, the $42.
No, I understand that. I'm just saying, when you, if I'm looking at Table 2 here of the current retail with no distributed generation that's showing $113.38 for somebody who uses 960 kilowatt hours, is that based on our existing rates now? Or is that based on the recommended changes from the cost-of-service study that we just got finished?
Current rate.
Okay. And so I guess my question is, how does it compare if we're going to move, and we've already talked about the fact that we need to move more of our customer charges from the variable portion of the bill to the fixed portion of the bill? I would like, I think it'd be helpful to see, how does this calculation look if we're talking about the revised rate structure that we've had under consideration right now?
The way that it's designed, since the proposed changes to your rate structure would be increases to the fixed $9.80 charge for residential customers, this tariff would, that component of this tariff is exactly the same as whatever's in the residential service tariff. So as that rate goes up, it also flows through to this tariff. Does that make sense?
I know that the cost-of-service study has been a long journey, and it's been done very conscientiously and carefully. Lisa, can you explain the difference between using a median customer bill to an average customer bill?
I can. And I think there's a misunderstanding of how rates are calculated. The cost-of-service study is based on average consumption across the board for all rate classes. And that's different than, you know, using a median. I believe, I mean, so basically, if we were to adopt a median to calculate the service availability fee, the fee would go up because the median is lower than the average. The average is 960. The median looks like it, in the one month of data that we looked at, looks like it's 600 and something. So you're having the same fixed costs over a smaller number, you know, which makes a bigger number. You're recovering the same fixed cost over fewer billing determinants, if you will. I believe the goal is, for Mr. Uhara, is to allocate fewer fixed costs to distributed generation customers. You know, so I think that's the confusion. And you can do that, but you would, you know, there is no data that I've seen that currently means that a distributed generation customer on your system causes less cost on the system. Maybe when you get to the point where you have a significant penetration of distributed generation, you might see that. You might see savings in infrastructure. But I don't have any data to support that right now.
Speaking of the penetration of distributed generation, how many accounts are we talking about here?
Currently 11, with one application we just approved last week.
Which could be a result of the buy-all-sell-all agreement that we had that was not...
Yes. No, I understand that part of this is that we want to encourage, or at least not discourage, home generation, right? I mean, the buy-all-sell-all evidently discourages that. But we've spent a lot of time in these meetings over the last couple of years talking about these 11 accounts. And I, you know, I don't say that flippantly. I just mean that it's, there's a lot of work going into this calculation right now, and it's difficult because we're talking about such a small sample size, right? I mean, we're not talking about half the town doing this. We don't, it's very difficult to figure out exactly how it works at large scale when we're only talking about 11 bills. You know, it's a little frustrating from that standpoint, Lauren, because we had this meeting two years ago, and one of my questions was, you know, that was driven by, partially by GRDA, you know, suggesting that if we're not using the buy-all-sell-all sort of framework, that somehow the fact that we have to buy all of our power from GRDA might be affected by this rate tariff or this tariff structure. Is this proposed, has this been run by GRDA? Does GRDA have an opinion on whether this tariff is in line with what their expectations are?
So that's a great question. We currently are, you know, buy-all-sell-all, that's what we do with GRDA. We did not run this by GRDA. We have a, that GRDA, you may mention, remember, ex-October timeframe when Ash Mayfield came to present, where they were updating their DG policy, which gave us more, I don't know if the word's freedom or abilities to, you know, it was a cap at 100 kilowatts installed capacity. Now it's 1,000, you know? So they were, they were hearing from their customers that, hey, we need to, we need to look at this, but there were parameters set in place. So we are, this rate falls within their guidelines, certainly, so.
Okay.
We're not doing anything that would be against that. You know, and I will say, this rate, you know, it's a professionally-designed rate. It encourages solar. We, you know, as we're designing this rate, we struggle, and we would really like maybe some feedback from the trustees, because encouraging and incentivizing are two different things. The rate is certainly an improvement over the buy-all-sell-all in the sense that it has net metering, and we have modeled that there will be cost savings for the majority of our customers. But we're also hearing from other folks that, you know, incentivize, and, you know, when you say incentivize, to me, that means, you know, who's going to pay for that incentive? And where's it coming from? Because we, you know, overwhelmingly, like Lisa said, we've heard that non-DG customers do not want to subsidize those that do want this. And so we have designed a rate that covers the cost of service that we know from our cost-of-service study now and provides, we believe, benefit to those who want to install solar or DG.
So I'm trying to figure out what the difference is with these two, the current buy-all-sell-all and the new rate structure, because this is what's in my head right now. Because right now, if you're under buy-all-sell-all, you're buying power at a retail rate, and then you're selling back the power you generate at a wholesale rate. And there's a bigger chunk of the fixed cost that's being applied to your bill on a regular basis. Under this new rate, they're buying from us, they're paying the fixed costs, and then they're buying and selling back to us at a wholesale rate.
But much, much lower amounts. You're netting out most of the usage. So under the buy-all-sell-all, you pay for every kilowatt hour, and then you sell every kilowatt hour you produce at a much different rate. You know, you're buying at 10.7 cents in summer, and you're being compensated 2.7 cents.
Because that, because that 10-cent rate right now includes a lot of the fixed costs, so they're sort of kind of getting double-charged for the fixed costs at some level under the current arrangement.
Well, you know, at low-level usage, you're probably not recovering all the fixed costs on customers, and then at the high-level usage, you're probably over-recovering.
Okay.
You know, because of that, you know.
So, I mean, we have a, I mean, the recommendation here is that you guys will come back with a, with a, an actual resolution or whatever it is to set this rate. I mean, councilors or trustees, are there concerns in terms of specific adjustments that you'd like to see made before they bring back a resolution on this item?
It's really confusing. You know, we, I was, I'm on the Renewable Energy Task Force, and we didn't have very many meetings to really study this. I think we had two meetings. And it's, although, of course, I'd seen the cost-of-service stuff before, no one else had, and it was, it's really complicated, even though I think Lisa did a really nice job in this presentation with the graphics and simplifying some of the language. I really appreciated that. And maybe it's because I've seen it a couple of times. It made much more sense. You know, Henri is very passionate about this topic and passionate about get numbers. And so I do respect his, I respect his questions, and you can't redo a study like this in two weeks and change everything. But I would like, I would like perhaps the commitment to look at things after this has been in place to see if there are other ways to think about it. One of the other pieces that Henri sent to us was comparison of rates across the state. And, you know, I, these are all, I mean, some of them are community electric co-ops, and some of them are investor companies. I don't know what the difference for those types of companies providing electricity would be, because the, you know, the rate structures are just different. And I imagine that there's some difference in that. But just a good look at that over the next year, see what kind of response the city gets to a different rate structure from new DG customers, and just follow up on whatever new information may be gathered.
Lauren, does the $42 charge cover the fixed cost of the SUA?
It's designed as the average, as long as, as long as the customer usage doesn't go up or down. You know, it's not an exact science, I think Lisa would say, but it's as close as we can get right now with our cost-of-service study.
And do those include the fixed costs that, do those include transfers?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So we can safely say that, under this tariff, people who use distributed generation at their homes are contributing just as much to the infrastructure and the other uses of SUA money for city purposes as everybody else?
Yes.
And it provides a lower rate than what we're currently providing for these folks. And in that, in that sense, it encourages more folks to be able to use distributed generation at their homes.
Yes.
That sounds like a reasonable outcome from looking at all of this stuff again. And Lisa, this is a, as Vice Mayor said, I mean, it's a ton of work and really well-presented. It is a very complex topic, and we've looked at more power rate... It is a very complex topic, and we've looked at more power rate tariff charts and pages of material over the last several months than anyone really should ever have to be subjected to unless they're actually getting paid for it. But, you know, I do appreciate the work that you did, not just in making the, the topic a bit more simple to understand, but getting the input from the community and putting that in the context as well. So it's a, helpful at this point to see this information. You know, from my standpoint, this makes sense in trying to solve a true concern of the folks who are using this, while also taking into account the concern of the rest of the community in, in, you know, not subsidizing that. And so it seems like a, a good outcome from that perspective. But I agree, Vice Mayor, that, you know, we put this in place two years ago, knowing that our rate structure might change, knowing that things are going to change in the future. So it is something that we, we, we need to keep on top of. We've talked about the rate studies in general. We need to do those more often than, than we've been doing them over the last, you know, couple of years, or a couple of decades. So we should definitely keep this on the, the review docket. Other comments, trustees? I don't think we need a, an actual action right at this point, Lauren. You'll, you'll take what we're talking about here and come back and see us again in a couple of weeks?
Yes, sir. No action at this time.
Anything further, trustees, on this item?
Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Lisa, for your, for your hard work on this. All right. Also you, Lauren. I know you and your team have been working on this a ton as well, so appreciate all of that.
Thank you very much.
There is nothing else on the agenda after this, except for reports from officers and boards. Mr. Dorman?
No reports.
Mr. McNichol?
No reports.
Trustees?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to adjourn the SUA?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adjourn the city utilities authority meeting. Teresa, please call the roll.
Chair Joyce?
Yes.
Vice Chair Darlington?
Yes.
Trustee Zanotti?
Yes.
Trustee Wedlake?
Yes.
Trustee Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, the Stillwater Utilities Authority meeting is now adjourned. Councilors, is there a motion to enter executive session?
Somebody.
We have a motion from Councilor Zanotti and a second from Vice Mayor Darlington. Mr. Dorman, can you call the roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Darlington?
Yes.
Councilor Zanotti?
Yes.
Councilor Wedlake?
Yes.
Councilor Jaloski?
Yes.
With a vote of five to zero, we will now enter executive session for the matters requested by the city attorney.